Okay, it looks like we're live streaming on Facebook. So I'm calling the meeting to order the Social and Human Capital Committee of the Social Innovation Commission of Cook County at 3:05 PM. Jesus, I juggle all of my open tabs here. So when I run through roll call pursuant to the Open Meetings Act to determine if we have a quorum of the members who have been appointed to the commission to constitute a quorum for the committee. We have members who are official members of the, who are commissioners on the Social Innovation Commission and some members of the committee who are not. So just trying to make sure we figure out if we have the quorum. Lynette McCray.
Present.
And as we do this, because we have some new members still, Lynette, as we go through the roll call, if you could just introduce yourself and the organization you're with, just so folks know who's everybody on the call.
Hi, Lynette McCray. I am Director of Neighborhood Strategy for Black Chicago Tomorrow. And we focus a lot on community investment and specifically economic development.
Thank you. Harry Austin.
Harry Austin here, present today with Safer Foundation.
All right, Marah Sheik.
Present, Chicago Food Policy Action Council.
Camille Kerr.
Present, here with Shy Fresh Kitchen and Upside Down Consulting.
Commissioner Carrie Thomas is not present. Jerry Aglipay, Aglipay, do not believe is present yet. David Cherry.
David Cherry, present, City Leader, All-Stars Project of Chicago.
David. Alderman Rhea Hadden, do not believe is present. Karen Norrington Reeves. The Chicago Cook Workforce Partnership is not here, not present. Olga Baptista, do not believe is present. Sol Anderson is not present. And Ashley Munson.
Hello, I'm here, present. I'm with the Greater Chicago Food Depository.
Great, thank you for coming on today. Okay. The, so reviewing, if folks were able to pull down the notes from the last committee meetings notes from March 24th, they were in the calendar invite. Were folks able to access them there?
Roger, I wasn't. Is there any way they can be sent to me? And it looks like Lynette, too. I should shake their head. Yeah, it showed an attachment, but there wasn't anything when I actually opened it, just a Zoom link.
Okay, yes. One moment. Were there other folks who needed it as well?
I couldn't open the Google Docs.
Okay, let me.
Yeah, we needed to.
Okay, I'll send it to the full list. Thank you. Oh, and I believe I probably skipped over this. Victoria, was there any public comment for the meeting today?
No, there is no public comment. And also, you currently do not have a quorum.
Okay. Okay, one second, these things attach here. And next month, we'll send these separately, so it's a little smoother. Okay. So in this, there should be the agenda for today, the notes from last meeting and the document that Jerry sent on the supporting families, working families. Were folks able to get the minutes, I mean, the notes from last meeting? Great. Were there any revisions or updates as folks scan it? Okay.
Nope, I have no changes.
Okay.
Yeah, I just did a quick scan, no changes, revisions.
Okay, thank you. So as we're reviewing the notes, we're reflecting on the presentation that we got from Karen Norrington Reeves about some of the workforce partnership opportunities. As we were thinking about the priorities for the committee moving forward, were there any reflections or observations that came from what Karen presented as the resources that they're providing and some of the networks that could come out of particularly thinking about developing pathways, equitable pathways for work and leveraging some of the programs that are available and even potentially some policy recommendations that could come? Let's open it up for folks for feedback or comment.
I mean, I thought her presentation was really excellent and it was very instructional because, you know, there was some new things I heard, you know, but I think that there's a lot of positive work when it comes to providing training and employment opportunities for young people, you know. And sometimes the, you know, sometimes there are attempts to put young people to work, but the training part is sometimes missing. But I think, you know, Karen does, you know, she, her presentation was very good at showing that they're taking young people, some instances who don't have a lot of skills, but the training plus employment is such an important element to make that work. And, you know, I thought the presentation was very good.
Yes, for me, one thing that stood out, based on some of the previous conversations that we have been having, were connected to her comments around supporting MBE and WBE contractors. I was, I was really trying to listen for, one, I mean, I like you, David, there were a lot of things that I heard that were new as far as the resources that they provide as far as training programs and just getting a better sense of the ways that they're identifying priorities for how they, you know, the sectors that they're training people in. But when she spoke to the needs that they have, she talked about the outreach. So how do we, how do they, you know, communicate, how do they better communicate and get the word out to people that this resource exists? Because they can be doing all the most amazing things in the world, but if people don't know and if they aren't utilizing it, then that's a big problem. And that, that's one of the things that I heard about, like, that's, there's an opportunity to help do some more outreach, to make sure that people that most need these resources are able to get in the door and know what's available to them. But the second thing she talked about was, or that I kind of remember was about the MBE contractors and, you know, is there, can we be better preparing them for the opportunities at the county, at the city, you name it? And so I wonder if on that second point, there might be some there, there in terms of where, you know, where this committee might come in, because that, that is one of the things that I know we had talked about as sort of, you know, one of our priorities and one of the things that we had an interest in. And so I just didn't want to kind of brush past that too quickly without seeing if there, if there is something there that's worth exploring as far as where we can add some value in that regard.
I wanted to add some, so it was, it was really helpful, I followed up and got to speak. That presentation, you know, spurred me to finally reach out to the, to the county and discuss their offerings and how they relate to Shy Fresh. And that was all really helpful. On the, on the RFP, RFP thing specifically, as Shy Fresh has been looking into applying to more and more RFPs, we've seen more and more language that actually precludes formerly incarcerated folks from working on contracts. And that makes it very difficult to, you know, it's, it's kind of, oh, we prioritize this workforce and we don't allow them to do things for our county and state and city. And we've gotten those provisions both at the, at the state and county level so far, where we've just been prohibited from applying for contracts. So it'd be interesting to think about how that their office could be a partner with us as we try to, and they can elevate why, why they invest and why, why this is such an important area of work so that we can, you know, take down some of those really structural barriers to meaningful employment and ownership of businesses.
Camille, did they reference why that was in there? Or you just kind of like more discovered the reality of it as you went through it, but not the like, this is here because of a law, this is here because of a?
It's their security policy. He said it's because of security, anybody with a conviction, a felony conviction can't be, regardless of what the conviction is or what the, you know, I mean, we're bringing in food and dropping it off because of, in that one, it was security. In the other one, they just make you sign something saying that, you know, folks, you know, have, don't have different convictions or whatever, but at Shy Fresh, we, we try not to ask, you know, we, we figure people have paid their debt and we want to provide, you know, ownership opportunities, gain full employment. So when they, so when these contracts then make us ask or then, you know, prohibit us from, from applying, it's, it's like a, it's like one, one side of the county is helping you and the other side of the county is, come near here, you know? And so that's difficult.
And I would just add to that, the Just Housing Initiative, actually, that the county recently passed, went into effect last year. And essentially what it does is it prevents housing providers from excluding people that are applying for a rental unit from discriminating based on that criminal history. So that, I think that is, it's heartening to see that there's actually precedent at the county level. The commissioners passed that last year. So I think there's, you know, there, there may be something to explore there in terms of even like parallels, like if we're, if we, if we are requiring this of housing providers, why wouldn't that be a conversation that we have with the county itself as far as who they do business with and what they can ask or, you know, even mandate for some of these procurement opportunities? Just a thought.
And the OJC is the Office of the Chief Judge. Camille?
Yeah.
And this is because you were looking at the contract for what specifically?
Juror meals.
So that would be a policy by the Office of the Chief Judge, potentially?
Yeah.
Harry, did you have any, knowing that you guys are very involved in workforce development at Safer, any reflections or thoughts from Karen's presentation last time or parts of this conversation?
Only to kind of reemphasize a couple of things that have already been said, that in terms of communications, there really needs to be really targeted and specific outreach about the services and resources available, kind of like, you know, here's a specific audience that we're going to and we're going to make this information available to them rather than just kind of presuming that folks are finding it on the internet or going to the American Job Centers or something like that. So, you know, more intentionality would be good because there are a lot of good resources available, but it's kind of complicated to know how to get them. And then also, if you are a, an agency that's trying to tap into, we owe a funding for training, that can be kind of tricky unless you really work with their technical assistance providers on that, knowing what funds are available for, we owe a funding, who we owe a certified trainers and vendors. And even if you are a contractor or we owe a funded types of things, just what you need to know in terms of data input, data collection in terms of their system. So all of those type of technical assistance supports become really critical things in terms of parallel, paralleling on what other county entities are doing about opening up the doors in terms of people with arrest and conviction records. Some of the new announcements this week in terms of second chance month with Honorable Danny Davis talking about some of the legislation that they're putting forward is always a need to kind of stay in tune and, and help kind of advocate for some of those, those things and hope that they trickle down at the local level. But to Camille's point, what was really important is pointing out some of the inconsistencies in terms of how various departments or functional areas of government are applying some of these old long-held policies and practices without really thinking about anything other than that's the way we've always done it and because that's the, that's what the law is, or that's the way we interpret it. So you, you know, it's got to be some real intention around eliminating those type of inconsistencies and moving forward, folks to be more forward-thinking. So that, you know, so that's kind of what I had in terms of thinking. So there's nothing that is particularly new or novel that I think I could add at this point.
Thank you, Harry. Let's just comment on process. For things in the chat, if you can, just vocalize them because of the public meeting, the chat is not available in the face, streaming Facebook public accessibility. So for comments, let's just make sure to articulate them. And Camille, I'm going to revisit your comment in the chat. So the Office of the Chief Judge informed you all at Shy Fresh Kitchen that pursuant to their security protocols and background checks, which is applicable, all bidders, employees with felony convictions would be precluded from providing services on this contract. Very legalese way of saying that by them. And Ashley, bringing you in, you all in from the food depository perspective, you know, seeing some of the potential for interweaving. I know you all are very focused on making sure folks have access to SNAP benefits or even SNAP training dollars that could be overlaid with some of the programs that Karen Norrington Reeves brought up at the last call. And also any programs or thoughts on contracting WBEs policy within the county?
Yeah, no, thanks for that, Roger. I am trying to get up to speed because I missed, I think it was supposed to be Sophie and we switched out. So I'm just trying to get up to speed on everything and look, I'm actually looking through the document right now. And so I will provide thoughts once I've had a chance to get a better grasp of everything happening.
Sure. Any other thoughts on what was Karen brought up last time and potential overlaps with, you know, her next steps and recommendations? We talked about consistency around procurement opportunities and make sure there's not penalties placed on folks who are making the effort for giving second chances, providing opportunities for formerly incarcerated individuals and communities as one of the policy pieces. Anything else around also just changing or shifting procurement opportunities for MWBE? Any technical support, other opportunities that should be thought about as well? As well as other workforce programs? Would that be an analysis that would be useful to ask for from procurement or one of the other departments in this, in the county on what consistency on that policy around within RFPs and how prevalent that language is?
Is there, isn't there a, there's a county level, like chief procurement officer, right? Okay. I don't know, I don't want to speak for anybody else. I'm, I'm just trying to, I guess I'm just trying to understand even how that is distributed. Like who, who would we technically even be asking? And I'm guessing it would be this person or that's where we would start?
That could be definitely, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, I'd prefer it not to be like office by office at the county.
Right.
Tell its offices, hey, if you have discriminatory language against formerly incarcerated folks or folks with felony convictions, please remove it from your contracts unless you have a, like, very specific and strong, I don't know, or maybe no unless. I don't know what it, you know, but I think, I definitely would prefer it be at, at that umbrella level and then each office would respond and stop.
There is some segregation because the Office of the Chief Judge is, Victoria, you're sending it. Please assist with our civics lesson. That I believe there are, that like the Office of the Chief Judge is under a separate authority.
Yes.
The healthcare department, healthcare is under a different authority.
Correct. So the chief judge is one of several offices considered separately elected officials. And so the jurisdiction over those offices is more limited in terms of the Board of Commissioners. So for example, with the president's office, you have what's called the offices under the president, which procurement would be one of those. And I can look for, for something that can, that shows the structure. So I can share it with Roger and Jerry's for their distribution to everyone here, just to try to help everyone get a better understanding of that structure.
But there could conceptually be, you know, a part of the analysis, but also something around a statement, you know, moving like a resolution that could come out of the committee to the Social Innovation Commission around recommending that the commission, Board of Commissioners do a full, you know, ask for a thorough examination of procurement policies to look at a few things, one being, and also talking to their sister or whatever, or their sibling agencies in the county. That this is a priority, especially something like the chief judge where that's, that incongruity would be. That this is a priority, especially something like the chief judge where that's, that incongruity would be knowing that they're now moving in the goals of not incarcerating folks, but how can be supportive of that change?
I'd definitely favor that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense because I think the first questions anyone coming to this conversation will ask is what, you know, what does it currently say? Where are those inconsistencies? Is it just the OCJ or is this kind of throughout? I think it would be helpful to, to kind of pin that down as well as, you know, understanding what that, what that structure looks like organizationally. Cause I agree, you know, if we have to go out to 30 different offices, this becomes a whole nother. So even just kind of understanding what that structure is like, you know, do they report through the county procurement officer or is there some other way? What also just be helpful from an advocacy standpoint to understand.
And then are there other things that folks think about or as you're thinking about procurement and equity and not creating more opportunity for MWVs? And other pathways? Are there other things that think about or bring up as we're having these engage, you know, starting to move to this engagement? That our best practices are understood that can really be moved, things that can help meet where, meet people where they are rather than one size fits all kind of step contracts and how their, you know, notification process is just kind of the whole range of things that could be done to help improve accessibility.
Well, I shared a PDF of our article. I couldn't figure out how to speak to it and link it in the chat, but I replied to your email that you sent out from Minority Business News. Their latest additions, an essay by Ralph Moore and Harriet Michelle, who are very prominent in the field of supplier diversity. So they're speaking to some issues there that I think would, would certainly be pertinent and relevant to considerations, even though they're speaking predominantly to corporate America. I think the the questions and the issues are the same to any large institution with any significant buying and purchasing power. So.
Great. Thanks, Harry.
So for, for what that's worth, that's, that information is out there and shared. I just shared it with you.
Thanks. Are there other things that we'd want to take into account from people's perspectives or experiences?
No, other than really just, you know, the idea of there needs to be some accountability for MWVE procurement and understanding how their practices impact their ability to broaden economic participation. You know, and granted, I think that Karen raised some good issues about how you move the needle internally on, on some of those things, but I think it's, it's about, you know, largely about intention. And then how do you translate that into revised policies and, and practice?
This is Victoria again. Just quickly wanted to share, I put a PDF copy in the chat of the Cook County Policy Roadmap Executive Summary. And pages four and five are a pretty good layout of those separately elected offices and then all the list of offices under, offices under the president.
Thank you.
And Victoria, this procurement highlighted in the roadmap anywhere in particular, if you're aware.
I don't recall at the moment. I think there is, has been an updated version of the report since this executive summary was published a couple of years ago. So I'll make sure to share those out and also see if I notice anything in particular regarding to procurement.
Okay, thank you.
Roger, I'm just wondering, did we, did we discuss at one point, you inviting the county chief procurement officer to do a presentation similar to Karen's?
We can. I think we may have brought that up, but we certainly can make that outreach.
Okay. I'm just wondering if it, I don't know why I had that thought in my head. I feel like it's there because somebody mentioned it at some point, but um, yeah.
To your own brilliant ideas, either way.
Yeah, I'm sure. But I'm wondering, because it seems like we were starting to crop up with some questions or at least some, you know, areas of concern that perhaps we can, we can even prepare for this conversation. So it is, I think it'd be helpful one to get an overview of kind of their, you know, their portfolio and what it is that they actually manage from that role. But I could see this going as more of a two-way conversation with us coming prepared with some things that we may want to put on their radar or just get some clarification on. So.
Yeah. Would we want another chance to have our, our questions a bit more sharpened and what we'd be wanting to ask one more meeting and then have them come in June?
I think that would be timely enough.
I agree.
Okay.
Makes big sense. I think that's good.
Great. Thank you. So we'll think we'll look at that path. So having a follow-up conversation on procurement and our understanding of it, what things we'd want to be exploring and then have a conversation and invite the chief procurement officer and potentially some of the maybe procurement from a couple of these different sub- branches of county government as well for that conversation. Welcoming Jer Aglapi, co-chair of the commission, I mean, count committee. Thank you. So we've been talking a lot about procurement, building off of Karen, the conversation with Karen last time. We're really trying to explore some of the issues with MWBS. Camille highlighted, they just went after a bid with the Office of the Chief Judge for juror meals. And one of the restrictions they noticed was, or ran across and was actually a barrier for them was the that they prevented felons from even applying for the bid. So really looking at some of the more procurement practices that are inconsistent on that with other parts of the county. The Clinet brought up the fact that there's a fair housing policy that the county passed that is preventing discrimination based on criminal records. So whether looking at, you know, digging in deeper on some of the procurement practices that the county has and policies and seeing what opportunities there are for conversation and change there.
It's interesting because the Biden Harris administration, one of the changes for access to PPP is those who have had previous felony convictions can now apply for PPP so long as it's a non-fraud felony conviction. So it's just something to consider in, in terms of the experience that Camille had with procurement. You know, what are the different ways it could be addressed? As well as just an example.
Yeah, that same restriction that's in the, one of the state level grants that we saw, which I would want to clarify because it's not for our, not relevant to our members, but could be relevant to our future members because we don't scan whether like petty theft or, you know, counts as a fraud related or different, different types of thefts that are based on poverty, right? Which some potential members that we bring in might, might have on their record, whether that would restrict them from participating and, or is it just any, especially because what it asks for is like your, your owners and officers and directors and as a co-op specifically, that, that is who our owners, officers and directors are. So that makes it difficult. But even that restriction, which is better, which we can pass right now, but we don't want to have to think about who we're letting into the co-op based on what these different forms are, are saying that, you know, we can, can't have as our officers.
Great. So does that, at this stage, were there, and Jerry, I don't know if there's any other outcomes that you saw for things to process that came up from Karen's, our conversation with Karen last time? Regarding kind of thinking about priority setting for the committee and next steps? Jerry, any other thoughts on Karen's presentation?
No, no, no other thoughts. I think just a process-based thought here, though, not related to Karen's is when we're looking at next steps, how, you know, we really operate as this thought leadership group, what we lift up to the county and the commission. And so really understanding what is, what we want to lift up in terms of feasibility, how it can be addressed and trying to put some, some, I guess, some parameters or ask on it. So we do see some, some measure of an outcome or not, but like, you know, we, we, we be specific with, with what we are, are lifting up from this, this work group. Given again that, you know, we do operate as this kind of think tank, thought leadership group of what we'd like to see and our expectations of what can also happen as well.
Great. Thank you. And Jerry, you had shared, so I think kind of moving on from that conversation with Karen and the next steps there. You had shared the, and I re emailed it to the group, the state policy around working families?
No, that's a workforce agenda policy.
Workforce agenda policy.
Yeah. So it's not working families. So there is a coalition led by the Chicago Jobs Council, which is a statewide coalition. So it's a little bit of a misnomer. And I don't know if you want to share the screen or if people open it up. It's a whole host of organizations from Hire 360, you know, with Jay Rowl's group that are looking to see like, how can Illinois recover from this pandemic in terms of the state's workforce investment dollars? 95% of our workforce dollars actually come from the federal government, but it's inflexible on what the uses of that are, especially because it's flowing from we owe a funds. And, and that 95% has actually been decreasing, like the amount of that has been decreasing over the years. And so it's small business majority and other organizations. If you look on the flyer, it's, it's a lot. We've all signed on to the, the good, good jobs workforce agenda. And it's a very broad agenda and no specific, you know, no specific legislation per se, but what are the outcomes that we'd like to see? There are reductions to workforce development. More flexibility. If the state were to, to invest 5% to the 95% that the federal government is investing, how that can actually fill in the gaps by making that funding more flexible in that, that we owe a funds cannot allow the use for. You know, how can nonprofits that receive the funds for workforce training and, and report better? How can the state and city and county governments, especially, you know, money that's going to county? How can that be, how can workforce dollars that flow from the state that we'd be asking for be structured so that it actually complements the federal government? And is, is, is flexible and not restricted as the federal government funding is? So just wanted to share that with individuals that this is an agenda that's, that's being shared among many, many organizations and groups. As you can see, all the logos on there. And there are four pillars that are really looking at it from a racial equity lens, given that in this country in less than 10 years, we will be majority minority workforce. So what does it mean for the state to recover? And what does it mean for the state to invest funds and thereby flow down to the county in terms of workforce development, not only for job creation, but how does that support small business in regards to recruiting for the workforce? As many micro business owners, especially on the South and West sides and in rural areas, it's very challenging for them to currently access federally funded training programs. Because, you know, they, they, the owner is also, the HR person is also the trainer, is also the bookkeeper and such. And it's challenging for them to participate in, in many training programs when they also have a dire need to hire and retain workers too. So I wanted to share that with this group and see if, you know, if there were any questions on it, we can have time to digest it before the next meeting to see if we wanted to lift this up for the county to sign on to. I guess the lens for county would be, you know, would they be willing to advocate for state investment and policies where if the dollars are flowing to county government, that it's the, that we'd like county government to, to fill in the gaps in terms of any state investment dollars for workforce training and development? And maybe some of your organizations already signed on to it. It's a lot of organizations on that, on that sheet. So.
Yeah, I saw safer in the food depository. A couple already. Jerry, are there some, you, you said there are some spaces that would some of these policies and flexibilities that you'd want, that the state would need to change for the county to be able to be more flexible or there's recommendations to the county?
But what I'm saying is state dollars, what we've been advocating for is that state dollars investment of 5%. Because 5% of workforce dollars are, is the state. 95% is actually, we were relying on the federal government. But that restricts the state's use of how those funds could be structured and how it could flow to nonprofits and county and city governments in terms of the programs for workforce development training. And it's something Karen even alluded to, you know, for instance, for some of the limitations from a small business lenses that we owe a dollars can't be used for small business training and development, which makes it a little bit challenging because if you have a worker that is in a training center and upskilling or learning new skills, we know that they have an opportunity, for example, to possibly strike out on their own and create additional income for themselves as an entrepreneur, but we owe a funds can't be used for that. I'm just saying from a small business, there are other limitations for we owe a funds from, you know, the different organizational perspectives. I'm relaying it from a small business perspective is state investments in that 5% funding or even what we saw with the last recession with employee subsidized subsidies for, for, for jobs wherein the business owner does not have to pay the, the the wages and the salaries. It's, it would be subsidized, employees subsidized wages through such programs. You know, asking for another angle is, you know, what, what comes through the American Jobs Plan or the American Rescue Plan? You know, can that also be put toward the state to consider subsidized training, subsidized wages and employment, subsidized employment as well? Thereby it takes the onus off owners who are looking for, for workers to hire. So there's some, it's a myriad of, of policy agendas. But I wanted to share that because there's But I wanted to share that because there's, there's four different pillars. So it's kind of like there's something in it for everybody, you know? In this policy agenda for, for, for good jobs and workforce development in Illinois. So, so that's, that's simply it. And I, you know, I know it's something that you probably haven't had a lot of time to review and digest, but so I'm just offering up to review and digest that before our next meeting and seeing if there's any ideas on if we wanted, the, the ask would simply be if, if the county wanted to sign on to it. Again, it's not committing them to any specific policies, but saying that they support this agenda and the pillars, which is looking towards workforce development from a racial equity lens. And that's simply it.
Any follow up questions for Jerry or? Thoughts on the agenda? So sitting with and digesting before the next call.
Yeah, we all just received this. We sent it out pretty, pretty recently, I think yesterday or today. So we just encourage people to read that, visit the, the website, see who's, who's who signed on to it. And if we think this is something to lift up for the county to sign on to in a very broad support approach of this racial equity workforce agenda and what is, how the state manages federal funds? And how the state would manage its own investments as well.
Great. And then we had on the agenda kind of any follow ups from things, other legislative goals that were moving forward. The Clean Energy Jobs Act. Committee member Olga Baptista was in favor of, and my understanding is that's actually cleared the House. And it's now going to the Senate in Illinois. I'm not sure about parental leave. I believe that was, that, that was federal level policy, Jerry?
No, there's a bill now in the Illinois House, Illinois Senate, but I, it hasn't been brought to committee yet, I don't believe. So. I'm just lifting it up. We as an organization, Small Business Majority, where we are supportive of paid family, but the bill in its current form, we're not quite on board with that yet because it's asking the owners to, I believe, pay for invest all of that, undertake the burden of paying for contributing to the insurance plan fully, rather than a shared part of the employee and employer.
And is that over a certain size level of employer?
No.
To all employers would be.
I believe so, yeah.
And I'm looking down the list. I'm trying to remember if any of these were actually active bills or like the Cooperative Economy Act, was that a sample one from a different state? Camille, is that active?
Yeah, we, I, we addressed last time that that's not a bill here. That is just something.
That could, could be broad.
Yeah, well, I mean, I would just say maybe when we have the training and/or discussion around cooperative models more deeply because people wanted an educational training on that, maybe just bring in some of for this group, some of the legislative initiatives as well. We can definitely take it off this list of, of bills to like yay or nay or, or support for the county. It's more of a thinking, big picture about how, how to build a more cooperative economy, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And then the earned income tax credit expansion, that was a state level one as well. Is that moving forward?
Yeah, that's, that one's moving forward. Not sure when that's going to be heard in committee, I think soon. But, you know, let me find out the status of that. And if we would want to recommend to support the expansion of that, I mean, we also did not have the fair tax did not pass in Illinois. So, you know, this is one measure to keep people out of extreme poverty by expanding who can participate in the earned income credit, expanding it to ages eighteen to twenty-four, but also over age sixty-five as well. Which, so so that's with the earned income credit.
Thank you. Were there other things legislatively or policy wise, people that are in motion now that folks want to highlight? That are prior, that could be priorities for your organization, partners right now? Any other announcements, updates, events coming up that folks want to share?
Just that I, I saw a press release recently from Chase that their next round of advancing cities. Funding and grants are, are going out. I don't know. That's just kind of like an, an FYI for folks to start thinking about different coalitions that might want to rally around something or whether we want to think about being intentional about maybe having the county work as a champion for some type of very specific type of initiative that could draw in critical partners as participants. So it's it's not released yet, so it's just a press update of what's coming probably in the next thirty or forty-five days. So it's just food for thought right now.
Harry, what is that program?
JP Morgan's chance, Chase's Advancing Cities Challenge funding. It's kind of like multi-year, large mega equity focused funding initiatives generally going to large collaborative projects and initiatives and a lot of them are pretty much geographic, specific types of efforts.
They've been, I work with JP Morgan Chase on some programs. So they've been funding this since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
It's been a while.
Yeah. So they've been, they, they've been funding, you know, various initiatives such as the Business Colors of Equity Fund. Where, you know, it provides more funding to lend out to the mission-based nonprofit lenders and such, who are coordinating with one another. So I, you know, I think, I, I'm sure the county is well aware of this already, especially through through Sochi Flores and Irene Share as well regarding funding.
No, and it's, it's been several years of funding and there have been a number of initiatives funded in, in Chicago. I was just thinking about whether or not there is something very specific that we might want to say that the the county puts a stake in the ground around being a champion for, for something specific. I, I mean, I don't have an idea about what that something might be at this point in time, but in terms of there's some work that we've been looking at within the Innovation Commission that we think should provide a pivot point for you know, some type of collaborative project. This might be an opportunity.
Thinking about workforce development pathways, procurement opportunities for to be business.
And it doesn't, you know, we've talked a lot of things more, not just our committee, but the other committees as well as things that we think would really kind of have an impact on, on communities that are kind of locked in the lower rings of, you know, economic mobility and sustainability from you know, from transfer desert to food deserts to lack of investment in, in terms of corridor development, you know, any number of things. But I'm just saying, if there's something that we have been talking about over the last several months or a year or so, that we would really want to accelerate some type of energy around coming out of this commission as a, as a focal point for something, then that's, that's what I'm throwing up as, as a place for ideas.
Well, Harry, um there is going to be a co-chairs meeting in the next couple of weeks and we could certainly bring that back to the conversation.
And I see the link has been put in the chat and I'm, I'm sure it is readily available. So we could begin to take a look at it and kind of see what comes up from, from an idea standpoint. And you're right. So then the co-chairs could say, hey, is this an opportunity? Us to identify a priority and just drive, you know, drive to nail home at one or two priorities. That's what I'm suggesting.
So is this about the county applying for these grants? Because in the past, it's been collaborative existing partners or is, are you saying that the county should provide a recommendation to JP Morgan Chase?
You know, I don't know, I don't know that there's anything that would preclude the county from doing it, but my idea is that the county could be an anchor participant, not necessarily a lead, but you know, a kind of anchor participant. And then marshal its resources to, to bring together collaborative around something.
Maybe, maybe it's best to wait till the announcement comes out as well. That may give us a little bit more guidelines as to what they're looking for.
You mean the advancing challenges, cities challenges?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure from what I've seen in the press release, it's going to be consistent with what they've done over the last several several rounds. There may be some nuances that they offer up differently this year to drive more toward.
So, yeah, so the past several rounds would, would be the investment of funds for the banks and financial institutions to lend more for owners of color with, you know, less, less of the credit restrictions. Development of the storefronts on the South and West sides in Chicago. So I think it would be going toward that economic development existing if, if you think it's going to be similar to the previous rounds as well for JP Morgan Chase.
I mean, that's kind of where they've been in Chicago. If you look more broadly at some of the stuff they've done in other geog, in other geographies, they've been a little bit more diverse in the types of things. But surely they're, they're, what they're anchoring on is the types of things that finance, financial institutions can get behind and be a catalyst around. And, you know, so typically that's economic development, but maybe what it, what we might be thinking about is how do we redefine economic development? Because typically economic development is, you know, bricks and mortar's places in, in businesses. But maybe if, if we redefine what, what that means for more equitable impact from, from a community standpoint. That might be where we can begin to let some of the ideas that we've been talking about on, on this commission come to, come to the forefront. You know, and maybe now with all the focus on re, rethinking what, what equity means, they might be open to something that's outside of the normal definition of economic development and outcomes. But, you know, we've, we've got a little time before the announcement to see historically what's been done, not just here in the Chicago area, but, you know, much, much more broadly from a geographic standpoint and say, hey, these are the types of things that resonate with what we've identified as needs. So that's, you know, that's about as far as I've taken it, but with the idea of suggesting that the the county serves as a, a critical champion, not necessarily the lead applicant or anything like that, but as a critical champion and convener of a collaborative that kind of points at some of the things that we think would, would represent real social innovation. So just food to think, food for thought.
Thanks for bringing that up, Harry. Thinking about some of those bridges that can happen. Any other announcements or updates or? Folks want to share? Any successes? To celebrate this before we adjourn for today?
You know, just that Victor, I don't, I don't know if it's, I'm sure we've got it out there somewhere as a link. I'll share it. There was a yesterday's kickoff in terms of the Second Chance Month activities with which Victor participated as part of one of the presenters. I can try to make that available to folks. He, he co-chaired there with Jeff Corcinech. And Honorable Danny, Danny Davis on that, on, on some of the new legislation that's going for.
We'll be creating, we're in the midst of creating and establishing an equity table for owners of color in Illinois. So not just Chicago land focused Cook County, but throughout all the state for representation of small business owners who support, who want to provide feedback and be subject matter experts on their lived experiences to share regarding policies, programs, resources, tools. Centering Black and Brown business owners and understanding that and women of low wealth and assets, understanding that even though entrepreneurship is the second best way or next best way to owning a home, to building wealth. Racial systemic barriers through the decades have actually afforded those efforts for many owners and, and has an impact on the communities in which they operate as well. So just wanted to share that with, with all of you. We'll be sending invites to certain business owners. If you know of any, it'd be great to review them to see if they would like to be part of our equity table. Again, we'd like to also get a good representation. Not just Chicago, but the county, other counties as well and statewide, given that there's also this, this this underrepresentation in the rural areas and the owners of color who are in those rural areas as well.
All right, thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Camille, any Chey Fresh Kitchen updates? Big news?
Sure, yeah, we, we launched a collaboration with, we just got a block club.
Good afternoon, Safer staff. This is Jim.
Oh, we just got, we just launched a collaboration with two other worker cooperatives, two other BIPOC owned worker cooperatives to continue our work to feed folks who are well, to build food sovereignty more generally and specifically to, to feed folks who are facing food insecurity. And, and to make it sustainable because as we know, food insecurity didn't start or end with a pandemic. It grew, but it's going to continue. So us and, and Chey Fresh Kitchen and So us and, and Chi Fresh Kitchen and Cooperativa Visionarias and the street vendors, cocina compartida de trabajadores cooperativistas. So three worker cooperatives, one Black owned, two Latinx owned, continuing to address food insecurity in our community. So that was, that was exciting that we got that collaborative together and got initial funding for it. It's called Shine Meals again, but so there's a, it's a fun little win. We're excited.
Lynette, anything on your end? David, any new updates from the All Stars?
We're, you know, we, usually this time of year, we would be getting ready for a, an activity, a ceremony, a graduation ceremony, putting young people into paid internships at various businesses. But, but this year, we're, we're, we're going to have virtual internships for young people. And the, we have companies that have agreed to pay young people $15 an hour for about 20 to 30 hours a week. So we're still working with the businesses on what that would look like virtually. You know, normally, and we had to do some of this last summer, but, but we're going to continue that, that this year. And, you know, we're, we're, we're going to make an attempt across the country, including Chicago, New York, Newark, New Jersey, Dallas and San Francisco to, to have like 200 paid summer internships for young people. So, so we're still working out what that would look like again virtually because it's going to be different. And we did some of it last year, but we want to do more of it to have quality internships where young people can get to know some business people. And right now we're, we're just completing, we just completed a series of workshops that took place in settings like this via Zoom where young people connected to business folks. But again, the, the, we're going to have internships, $15 an hour from law firms, real estate companies, banks, financial services, institutions, architectural firms. And it's all about providing developmental opportunities for young people. So, so thanks for asking, that's a big success that we're looking forward to, to see how that goes. By this time next month, we'll, we'll have a better idea of how many internships we will have.
That's great, yeah, that's quite a, it's quite a shift to have to make. A lot of capacity building for you all and the youth and businesses to be able to make that transition. So congrats on making the progress there. Well, great, unless there's any other updates or announcements from folks, we can adjourn a little early today. Thank you all, so the next meeting will be, I believe, I actually did get the announcements out early for the next couple.
Looks like May 26.
May 26, yes, 3 to 4:30, great. And so we'll make.
Oh, you know, I do want to add just right, just very quickly, you know, the thing that, that Camille was speaking about earlier about, you know, about the opportunities for young people who are, I guess even adults who are incarcerated. You know, I think that's a big, you know, we, 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 that's, that's going to be such a big thing as far as how we turn around what's happening in Chicago. Because if people who are incarcerated are denied opportunities, we're going to have a harder time with reducing the violence, you know, because it leaves people who are, who have been incarcerated with just little to no opportunity. So, so that's a big thing that I'm definitely interested in too. And, you know, as much as we can, we try to tell companies to provide some opportunities. You know, some, sometimes banks are more resistant to that, you know. But, you know, just because of the financial services aspect of it. But, you know, but I, I think we have to change the culture of, of, of everywhere, the city, county, state, country, in that people who have been incarcerated, whether it's young people or adults, need to have some opportunities if we're ever going to turn around the current culture of violence we have right now. But I just wanted to commit, commend Camille for, you know, advocating for people who are incarcerated because, you know, and people who have been incarcerated because we, 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 we have to provide them opportunities, we just have to.
Thanks, David. All right, well, thanks, everybody. May 26, enjoy the rest of your cool weather day and we'll talk to you soon.
Bye, take care.
Bye, guys.